City of Salem, January 30th, 2023. Joint Public Hearing of the City Council and the Planning Board. The Salem City Council will hold a joint public meeting with the Planning Board remotely via Zoom in accordance with Chapter 170 of the Acts of 2022 and in person in the City Council Chambers, City Hall 93 Washington Street, Salem, second floor, on Monday, January 30th, 2023, at 6:30 PM pursuant to Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the proposed zoning map ordinance amendment relative to rezoning a parcel at 67 Derby Street, accessors map 41, parcel 0339, from residential two-family to industrial district. Notice of this hearing was posted on January 12th, 2023, at 5:39 PM and advertised in the Salem News on January 16th, 2023, and January 23rd, 2023. For the City Council, absent our nun, we do have attending remotely Councillors Hapworth and Councillor Watsonfeldt. Councillor Meganstott presiding. The following Planning Board members are present. Chair Chrisette, if you would like to do Planning Board role.
Thank you so much. I would like to just call this meeting of the Salem Planning Board to order. Elena, if you would take a roll call, please.
Phil Chrisette.
Present.
Kurt Reader.
Present.
Zach Counter.
Present.
Carol Hamilton.
Present.
Sarah Tarbet.
Present.
Helen Sides.
Present.
Tom Fury.
Present.
Jonathan Burke.
Present.
Josh Terrell.
Present.
Nine of nine.
Thank you very much, Elena. Salem Planning Board is in session. I'm present.
Thank you. We also have in attendance this evening from the City of Salem, we have Seth Latrell, the Port Authority Deputy Planner, and Acting Mayor Robert McCarthy joining us, as well as the petitioner attorney Joe Carente, on behalf of the petitioner. The following is the text of the ordinance. The text and map can be viewed in the backup documentation posted online as well. Order number 724A, zoning ordinance to amend a zoning map. An ordinance to amend an ordinance and map relative to zoning, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, the City of Salem zoning map in accordance with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, that the following parcel located in the residential two-family and industrial districts be rezoned to the industrial district. The address is 67 Derby Street, and the assessors map and lot number is assessors map 41, parcel lot number 0339. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. As mentioned earlier, I noted that also joining us in chambers this evening is Attorney Joe Carente, who can provide us with some backup in regards to his petition for the zoning ordinance amendment. Mr. Carente, if you could speak directly into the microphone, it's very sensitive. Thank you.
Very well, thank you, Madam President, members of the council, members of the Planning Board. Joe Carente, 70 Washington Street, representing this petition on behalf of Salem Wind Terminal LLC, which is the owner of the property that we refer to as the power plant. Although technically, it's not the power plant anymore, this is the land surrounding the power plant. You remember, and certainly members of the Planning Board will be familiar, that several years ago, the entire acreage of what was referred to as the plant, about 64 acres, I believe it was at the time, plus or minus, was subdivided into two lots. And sort of Lot A was what we now know as the gas-fired power plant that was permitted by footprint and has been operating the last couple of years. And then there is the remaining land, approximately 42 acres, that is not power plant land, but forms sort of a horseshoe around the power point, the power plant land, along the ferry terminal, runs along the water in front of the plant, and then another parcel by the sewer district. John Berry from Crowley is here with me this evening, and Jared Kemp is logging in remotely. Jared has a brief PowerPoint that we would like to show you, just so by map, you'd be able to see exactly the parcels we're talking about. So, I don't know, Madam Clerk, if it's possible to promote Jared Kemp?
Yes.
All right. And if he could be allowed to share his screen?
Jared, you should be, you will be promoted to panelist if you're not already, and you'll be allowed to share your presentation. One moment, please.
While he's doing that, we'll say that the, of the 40-odd acres, they're virtually, the entire site is zoned industrial. This small parcel that we're talking about, that we're asking the rezoner is zoned R2, residential two-family, which is what most of that section of Derby Street is zoned. And this is, these were older house lots that formed this small parcel several, several years ago, when, until the power plant had purchased these lots. They've been part, they've been owned by the power plant, this land, for decades. And the land is behind the shrubs, behind the evergreens, if you're standing on Derby Street. So, it's always been land that's sort of behind the fence, it's along India Street, which you may be familiar with, and runs sort of on the other side, the ferry terminal parking lot runs on the other side. You know, a picture's worth a thousand words, so. And here we are, looks like Jared's on. And Jared, do you have the ability to be heard here?
I should.
Yeah, we can hear you. So why don't you narrate what we're showing, and I'll jump in as necessary.
Okay, great, sounds good. Appreciate your time, thank you very much. So what we're looking at here is looking north up Derby Street, and then off to the side here is India Street, just to give a little bit of ground view perspective. We've all probably driven down Derby Street, and this looks fairly familiar. Next slide is just looking easterly towards India Street, where here in a minute, I'll show you overview of what the area, the approximately 1.3 acres we're talking about. In this slide here, showing, looking south down Derby Street, and then off to the right here, showing an aerial view approximately where that, that 1.3 acres that we're talking about. You can see up here, India Street and Derby Street, that intersection, and what doesn't currently exist, but what existed during the time of construction of the power station. Currently, this material is, is not here, however, the water station is right here. Right, and this is just an overview of the Altisur that we have done, showing the, the area being requested up here in the southwest corner of the site, north facing this direction. There's the intersection of Derby Street and Blaney Street over here, and then slightly, you can probably see Derby Street and India Street. The next slide will show the zoom in from, from the exhibit. So, area in, in being requested is this area right here, approximately 1.3 acres, and that's Derby Street and India Street. I did include a site plan and rendering, just in case we wanted to see an overview of the, the full project that will be on the site, plus a rendering, just to see what the future site use would be. Existing site plan, this is the area over here that we're talking about, where you requested. And then, I believe, probably, most of us have seen the overall rendering, this would be the section over here in the southwest corner, which is for the future site.
Thank you, Jared. If you could go back one slide, that'd be great.
Can you see that, Joe? Can you me go back more?
No, it didn't change.
Look at this look. How about now?
No, no.
Are you looking for the rendering, Joe?
There it is, got it, thank you.
Okay.
So this is the horseshoe, or the U I was talking about, the grayed out area is the property owned by Salem Wind Terminal LLC, and that is the site, as, as we refer it to, and it, and it's up in that. That is all zoned industrial but for that little corner patch, right where, if you can see the cursor, Joe, go back to it, it's right, right there. And so, the idea here is to take the industrial zone that covers the entirety of the site and just pull it to the corner so that, so that all the, all the power plant land is zoned consistently and can be used for our, for our purposes, so. Anything I say right now is going to be repetitive, so I think if that's, that's really all we wanted to present, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any questions from the City Council? Councillor Presnuski, then Councillor Dominguez.
Thank you, President Stott, to Attorney Carente. India Street is public property, has that already been declared surplus, have we already sold that?
No, and no. So it remains, it remains a public street, and we may be coming in with a petition to ask you to discontinue it, but that has not happened yet.
Thank you.
Councillor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott, thank you, Mr. Carente. I just want to ask, what is the purpose exactly? Can you elaborate a little bit more? What is the purpose on changing the zoning to be, what kind of, what are you?
What are we using it for?
Yes.
Okay. John, do you want to come up and answer that?
Could I just ask Jared to stop screen sharing while we discuss? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time, thank you for having this session with us. The site, that area of the site, it will be rezoned, we're looking to have it rezoned for industrial use, and we will use it for the laydown of components. The, at this time, we're looking for quite possibly blade storage, we'll have the, the blades for the windmills stored in that area, so that's the intention.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. So, I understand the, the intended use of the area, my question is, what happens to the existing buffer that's there right now? I happen to know a few of the people who live in the neighborhood right there, and right now, that's a popular area for walking dogs, there's a lot of tree and shrubbery cover that kind of sheer shields the industrial look of the site on the other side from the neighborhood that butts up right against it, and I can't tell from the renderings what the intent is to continue to manage that or not manage that, so what happens for the neighbors who now may have something built right up against their public way?
Right. So, the intent is to keep that buffer in place, and I want to be careful to say that not every tree you see there will remain, there's going to be some replantings, you know, a comprehensive landscape plan will be prepared and submitted as part of our Planning Board Site Plan Review, which we will be going to, you know, in the next, next couple months. But the intent is to keep that buffer, that, and you're referring to the, the green strip, right, sort of on the street side of the shrubberies, yes, the intent is that that will remain.
Any further questions from the council? Any questions from the Planning Board? Chair Chrisette?
You're muted, Bill.
My apologies, thank you. Kurt, any, thank you very much, Madam President, any members of the Salem Planning Board with questions or comments for Attorney Carente or the applicant? So I'm going to start.
You went quiet again, Bill.
I know, it's hard to. Start with Zach and then Kurt. Zach?
Sure, so is, are there any plans on developing India Street? I bring this up, you know, not only as a member of the Planning Board, but as somebody who lives about two blocks away from where this rezoning would occur, and, you know, just like Council and McLean was bringing up, I am one of those individuals who walks their dog regularly along that green space, and not thrilled about the idea of industrial construction use very, that close to where, you know, such dense walkable communities are, so. Just kind of getting a better idea of what kind of developments is going to happen here if it gets changed over to industrial.
Okay.
Attorney Carente?
Yeah, John Berry, Antsman for Crowley Wind Services. The intent, again, in that area will be really storage area. The, again, just to, just to, on top of what Joe Carente was saying about the buffer area, the intent would be to improve that area, to make it even more desirable than it is today, and we're working with some, some of the members of the Planning Board to make sure that we try to address some of the concerns from the community. And the area that we will be laying these components will really sort of be, you know, sort of stagnant, there won't be a lot of activity, and these blades will be the shortest components, so they will have the least amount of impact to the neighborhood, so that's why we're intending to use that area for these blades at this time.
Can I get a follow-up, or should I go to Kurt?
Just a quick follow-up. So there's, is there any way to be, to get assurances that that green space will remain either green space or, you know, have some sort of non-industrial use? It sounds like we're going a lot on faith at this point, and it's a very important green space in that neighborhood, and I would like to know for certain that, you know, beyond just some sort of like promises, or we don't intend to construct on this particular space, if there's anything that we can get to assure that that will be, you know, continued community space.
Yes, I could suggest a way, we're coming to Planning Board in about three months, we're going to submit a plan for your review and the Board, the Board's review and approval. Those plans will show the green space listed there with a, with a landscaping plan, showing what additional plantings will be made, what, what might be removed, what will remain. And so, we fully expect to do that, you'll have the ability as the Planning Board to approve that or not, or, and so our permits, our conditions, you know, to go forward, will include the plans which show the green space there, so, yeah, you absolutely have, have jurisdiction and control over that.
Thank you, Council, Bill, I don't have any other questions.
All right, let's go to the committee there.
Kurt? Simply to build on what Zach was saying, and maybe I'll address you directly, Zach, as Joe Carente pointed out, when this goes through the Planning Board, we will fully expect to have dimension drawings and very precise drawings to indicate specific trees that shall be removed, those that may be replaced in a similar or totally different configuration. So all of us on the Planning Board look forward to that. I would point out, as part of the permitting and approvals for the power plant, a former owner of this property, we went through a lengthy public process to ensure that that alleys of honey locust trees were kept intact with the evergreen hedge as a distinct dimensional and landscape buffer between the Derby Street neighborhood and the finished use, whatever that might be. I get it, this is a new owner, but I would remind that, speaking for my seat on the Planning Board, we are going to be looking for keeping that intact to the greatest extent possible, just to telegraph expectations. That's all I have to say. Oh, it would be helpful if Crowley or Mr. Carente, if you could respond to the comment about India Street, right now, it's a public way, I understand that, it may be closed off, but it'd be good to hear, if not tonight, certainly you'll speak to us as the Planning Board, about whether you would use that as a gated entrance to the property.
Yes.
So, your choice when you want to address.
Yep, no, we'll, that's being laid out and prepared in our plans, and we'll, we'll fully explain that, you know, at the right time, that is, that is all in the works.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Thank you, Attorney Carente. Any other members of the Planning Board with questions or comments this evening? Yes, Josh Curry, go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Sorry, the, I want to kind of go along with what I've just heard, my, I don't have any inherent issue with the rezoning, I would just want to make sure that as we manage this through the process, that space, right now, there is a substantial buffer between the property and the neighborhood, and I want to make sure that that is preserved, and if possible, even enhanced somewhat. You know, the prior, the last two uses of the property were very passive uses in that area, it was just some of the staging site prior, after the tanks and, after the tanks and coal piles were removed, which was a very passive use, it was just the, a part, part of a parking area, which was also a relatively passive use for the construction teams, and has been vacant ever since, and, and so, it's an industrial property all over, all together by nature, and that's fine, that's part of what the city is, but, you know, as best as possible, it's an industrial site that lives right on the edge of a neighborhood, and the more we can do to buffer and protect that neighborhood from the activities of the power plant, the better off we are, I think, so. That's, that's the important thing to me, thank you.
Thank you, Josh, yes, what I'm hearing and what I'm feeling myself, I will express, my big concern is the issue of buffering and proximity to a neighborhood, so. Other members of the Planning Board? Okay.
Thank you, Chair Chrisette.
Yes, I have nothing further, I'm present.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Chrisette. So now, I guess we'll go to public comments. We are in person and virtual this evening, if there's anyone in chambers that would like to speak, appearing in favor, please access the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Robert McCarthy, 93 Washington Street, right here. Thank you, President Stott, as the Ward One Council, I appreciate, really do appreciate all the questions being raised, any concerns about the buffer area. This has been my biggest concern since day one, and I will say that all the early-on design plans have included the green space, basically the existing fence line, if you look at, the, the owner owns right to the sidewalk, but that green space that everyone alludes to is talking about, that is in every plan that I have seen, has been kept. The fence line will be enhanced because of elevation concerns that may have to do with the property with regard to grading, so there may be similar berms as we see, we saw, maybe not to the scale of what's over on the power plant site itself, but I can stand here tonight in full confidence saying that there will be a green space buffer zone between the neighborhood and this property. It may not look exactly the way it does now, but there will be a green space, and if it is enhanced, it hopefully will be for the better, because that's what's going to happen. And obviously, that's what's going to happen with the trust of the Planning Board in the next phase of this, but what we're talking about right now is the rezoning of two former house lots, we're not taking any house lots, no houses are coming down for this, it's currently inside the DPA, Deep Port area, and all's, the, they're just looking to rezon it, so the zoning is consistent through the whole parcel. I don't, as, as the Ward Council, I don't have an issue with it, the property's already been used that way, it's just to make sure that the use is consistent with what's going on, so I would be in support of this.
Thank you. If you are attending remotely or virtually and you wish to speak, you can use the Zoom feature to raise your hand. No raised hands, and I'll open it up for anyone appearing in opposition. Similarly, you can approach the podium or raise your hands using the Zoom feature, Raise Don't see any hands. Any further questions? Councillor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott, I had a very basic question, but it most likely have to do with the quality of life of the residents that live in the area. Concerning the storage of these blades, how large are these blades? Only reason I ask is because, basically, with the refraction of south and north, I just, very curious how big of, then.
The blades, it's still actually to be determined, because they have not selected their equipment manufacturer for the first project, so it will vary. I think right now, the blades, the intended length is approximately 300 feet long?
Thank you, and how high, I guess, when they're in storage?
So the blades will be in racks, and they'll be stacked three-high, so the height, I'm going to say, you know, I'm just guessing, but let's say 12 to 15 feet?
Okay, so they'll be stacked this way?
Right, three, three in a row, and, you know, say, you know, let's say 15 feet, you know, plus, that'll be the extreme height. I'll get you the more, better details, though, as soon as I can, I'll, I'll email them to this team.
Honestly, that, quite, that answer alleviates my concern, so thank you.
Okay.
Anything further? Any raised hands? Oh, Councillor McLean?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Council President. Since we're in the, in the process of sort of having a good-faith conversation about what we'd like to see protected there, I do just want to extend the conversation a little bit to wrap around the corner towards Blaney Street. There are a couple of properties there, not a lot, it turns into city land pretty quickly, but there are a few, and it happens to be one of the more sort of enjoyable local flavor properties that sits right around the corner there, there's a small sculpture yard, that's sort of one of our local institutions, it's one of those things that gives our local community a little bit of its own special character, and so, I want to make sure that that neighborhood is also being communicated with, and that that spot is going to be protected and enjoyable as well, so, just want to make sure that it's on the radar for everybody in the conversation.
Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you, Council President, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Councillor Marsillo moves that this be, public hearing be closed by roll call vote, seconded by Councillor Cohen. Any discussion?
Madam President, Kurt Reader had his hand raised, sorry to interrupt the flow here, but I think he had a question or comment.
Okay, thank you, yeah, no, I can't see that, so I appreciate that.
Sorry about that, I only wanted to point out that our expectation, when the applicant team comes before the Planning Board, that we talk not strictly in two-dimensional plan, but that you have fully rendered three-dimensional perspectives and cross-sections that show the relationship of the existing honey locust mature trees relative to the stacking of the blades that were described vertically and through words tonight, because ultimately, the combination of illustrative sections- of illustrative sections and perspectives are going to help not only the board, but the neighborhood residents understand what this means, and how we move forward from there. So, that's all, thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Marcelo, that the public hearing be closed by roll call vote, seconded by Counselor Cohen. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes.
On the motion that the public hearing be closed, 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, public hearing is closed. Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President Stott, I move that the matter be referred to the planning board for the recommendation by roll call vote.
Counselor Marcelo moves that the matter be referred to the planning board for the recommendation by roll call vote, seconded by Counselor Dominguez. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes.
On the motion that the matter be referred to the planning board for their recommendation, 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, the matter has been referred. Chair Grissette, if you would like to close the planning board?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn the planning board?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Kurt.
Zach.
Zach, can I consider yours a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Elena, would you take a roll call vote?
Josh Turriel?
Yes.
Jonathan Burke?
Yes.
Tom Peery?
Yes.
Helen Sides?
Yes.
Sarah Tarda?
Yes.
Carol Hamilton?
Yes.
Zach Counter?
Yes.
Kurt Reader?
Yes.
Phil Grissette?
Yes.
Nine of nine.
Madam President.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you. Madam President, a motion to adjourn by roll call.
Counselor Dominguez moves to adjourn by roll call vote, seconded by Counselor Presniewski. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presniewski?
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes.
On the motion that the meeting be adjourned, 10 to 0, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, good evening.
Thank you, everyone.